Press on May 20th, 2020 and has been duly advertised in the Asbury Park Press. Issue of May 22nd, 2020. All municipal clerks of the townships and boroughs within the regional high school district have been duly notified and the requirements of posting of notices have been met on May 20th, 2020. Could we all stand for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Toscano, are you there?
Yes, yes, Mr. President, I don't know what happened. One second, I'm here.
There you are. Go, okay. Are there any changes to the executive agenda you wish to know?
There was one, Mr. President. In addition to the items noted on the agenda, the board discussed for item number seven, potential copyright issue.
Okay. Reorganization items. May I have a motion to approve items C1 through C7? Motion, someone?
Motion.
Can I have a second? Second, someone?
Sorry, we were all muted. Parisi, seconds.
Okay, Parisi, seconds. Any discussion? Seeing none, can we have roll call on it, Sean, please?
Sure, Mr. Acetola, just the original motion, was that Mrs. Lavin?
It was Miss Higley.
Thank you, Mrs. Higley. Mr. Bruno?
There you go.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes, here.
Mrs. Higley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Is this just item C?
Correct.
C1.
Yes, yes, on C1 and C7 and abstain on C2, 3, 4, 5, and 6.
Okay, just one sec. So that was yes?
On 1 and 7. And then abstain on 2 through 6.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Mr. Acetola?
Yes.
Mr. Toscano? Are we good, Mr. Toscano?
Doing the math, give me one second. Apologize, I have to just minimize my screen one second. So we have just, Diane is not here.
Just Miss Capiola and Mr. Terris.
Just Miss Capiola and Mr. Terris, that's what I'm just doing. These motions are not majority, we're fine, Sean, we're good.
Thank you. I'm going to re-mute everybody, just so you understand you're muted. So, I will step in in the meantime. Item D1, the meeting minutes for May 18th, 2020. May I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes from May 20th, 2020?
Motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Lavin. A second. Two, okay, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Higley? Mrs. Higley? Gotcha. Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Mr. Acetola?
Yes. Okay, communication. Communication Department file in the office of the Board Secretary. At this point, I'd like to turn the floor to the superintendent for his report.
Thank you, Mr. Acetola, so I've muted everybody once again, so just make sure that if you want to say anything, please unmute yourself. Just a couple of things to go through tonight. First and foremost, one, congratulations. Mr. Dillon, if you could just share your screen momentarily for the teen driver safety. So usually we would, we present at the board meetings this time of year, a plaque to the winner of our teen driver safety program. The teen driver safety program is something that is very important to us here in the Freo Regional High School District. Obviously, on any given year, we have between 2,500 and 3,000 new drivers. And so the educational program behind the teen safety program, teen driver safety program is very important to us. We run a contest across the district for a design from a 10th grader each year. I'd like to congratulate Maya Poole, a 10th grader at Freo Township High School, for her design that was the winner this year. And of course, if you know, we present this as a plaque and then we also have a flag that flies at the home high school for the year. And so Maya, congratulations, thank you for participating. And you can see, if you want to get home, don't look at your phone, and some graphics there, so congratulations to Maya. Mr. Dillon, I'd now like to just transition into the other presentation that we have this evening, so thank you. And so for folks who have not, were not able to participate from the board on Thursday evening, we had a large gathering of particular community members to talk about plans for school reopening. And so that larger group consisted of board members, administrators, teachers, faculty and staff, community members, parents, students, municipal officials, police officials. And so we really ran the gamut, a number of parents with specific medical backgrounds as well, representatives from Center State Hospital. And we had a session where I'm going to present a very similar presentation this evening that just goes through a number of the options that we're considering for school reopening to update the community. Before I get there, just a quick update of where we've been. You know, obviously, the schools were closed on March 13th here in the Freo Regional High School District. Most of us at that point in time thought it would be for a few weeks. Obviously, with the COVID-19 crisis, it's been extended. I want to first and foremost thank my faculty and staff here, my teachers, my administrative team, they've been awesome through this. I think we were positioned very strongly to pivot readily with the use of Google Classroom and other tools. I think that the faculty and staff have been incredibly generous with their time above and beyond through all of this. This was no easy feat. This is a global pandemic, schools have never been closed like this. I'm proud of the folks in this district that continued teaching and learning through all of this. We also, as a school district, I think it's important to understand, we continue to feed hundreds of students throughout this crisis. We deployed approximately 500 Chromebooks to families in need. A lot of, oftentimes, that need shifted. Unfortunately, we have a lot of family members in this district that were directly impacted by the COVID-19 crisis, whether that was the virus itself, whether that was losing their job, you know, and we know that this was a very difficult time for all of our school community. So I'm thankful and appreciative that I work in a wonderful place with a wonderful board, wonderful faculty and staff, wonderful administrative team and terrific communities. And so we push through. And we're up to, you know, our virtual graduation this Wednesday and then an in-person graduation, yet to be determined, though it does look like the governor is going to lift some of those restrictions for outdoor gatherings up to 500. And so we're excited for what the future holds. At this point, we are really directing our focus and our attention to what the fall may look like come September. We know that there are a tremendous number of unknowns at this point in time, and I'll talk about some of those and some of the considerations. And then what I'll do is open it up for the board members to ask any questions, but what I would say to any of the board members, as I go through this, if you have any particular questions, please just unmute yourself and let me know, and I'll be happy to answer the questions as we go, to the best of my knowledge. Which brings me to the other point, that we are still awaiting specific state guidance for what the reopening might look like. And we know from other states, particularly, for instance, Bucks County just introduced their reopening plan in Pennsylvania this morning. We anticipate that within the next couple of days, that the governor's office and the Department of Education here in New Jersey will release our guidelines that we will work off of. But we are, we know that we can't, we couldn't wait, and so for the past several weeks, we've been working very, very diligently on scoping out what we need to plan for in order to be best prepared for the fall. And so, Mr. Dillon, if you can transition to the next slide. If we could transition to the next slide, Mr. Dillon? Thank you. So the major bucket areas in which we're looking at our commitments here, understanding what this looks like. So at the base of everything is obviously health and safety, understanding that we need to meet those thresholds and comply with whatever the expectations may be from the state at that point in time to provide a safe and healthy environment for our students, for our faculty and staff, and obviously to protect the larger community in that. And looking at the whole child, we understand that kids that are coming of age and in our school systems at this point in time, in this moment in history, are being exposed to a lot. You have the COVID-19 crisis, you have the racial crisis that's happening in the country. We understand that September has to look differently for a number of these students for transition's sake. And looking at all of the social and emotional needs of the children that we serve is going to be a critical component of what we do in the fall, in particular during that first 30 days or so back, once the schools return. But we're putting a lot of plans in place at this point in time for that transition, and I'll talk through that a little bit later in the presentation. The final commitment is around student growth and learning and understanding what, you know, what does teaching and learning look like in the fall, given the context of what the environment is that we must work within, right? And so that's an important consideration, and I'll talk about those models first if we can transition to the next slide. So, three real possibilities at this point in time. The optimum is obviously, schools are fully open, back in, and we're able to engage in our schooling and in the schoolhouse as we have traditionally been able to do. The second consideration is the schools are in some sort of hybrid mix. What that means is some combination of in-person and remote. And then finally, given the conditions and what they may or may not warrant, schools being fully remote. As far as we're concerned, as an organization, the most difficult of these three models will be the hybrid model to manage. And so we know that our schedule has to look very different. We are beginning the process of starting to mock up, you know, potential schedules at this point in time, and those schedules will be built off of, depending on what the criteria is for social distancing and what's allowed in the school, so it may be at 20% capacity, it may be at 50% capacity, or it may be a little bit higher than that. But we know that schooling in the fall is going to look a little bit differently than what it did at the end of the year, if we are in some sort of hybrid model. The schools, you know, the school system, the Freo Regional High School District, we anticipate utilizing what's known as a much more synchronous model. We were very much asynchronous, so asynchronous means sort of anytime, anywhere, and that's how we approach the spring. But it's very different to end a school year and transition to that than it is to open a school year, particularly with almost 3,000 9th graders that have never stepped foot in our buildings before. And so we know that that hybrid model, if that's the pathway we have to move down, will be much more synchronous than the model in which we have utilized in the spring. Obviously, a host of unknown questions around what classroom setups even look like. Interestingly, this morning, the Bucks County model had social distancing in the classrooms at three feet, had busing to two, a row, as long as they wore masks. I'm not certain, you know, obviously, New Jersey has been much more hard-hit by the COVID-19 virus than Pennsylvania at this point in time, and so I'm not sure what the guidance will be for New Jersey. We are working up models at this point in time as if it will be six foot of social distancing, six feet of social distancing, and we will pivot if we need to. But these are the three potential options in the fall and what they may include. We are equipping our classrooms, every classroom in the district with a webcam at this point in time. We understand that in all of this, if there is no vaccine, we know that there will be a number of students and staff with pre-existing conditions that will make it impossible for them to return, and we also anticipate without a vaccine that there will be a number of community members who will not send their children back to school directly. And, you know, the state guidance on how to address that will all be important guidance for us to make a decision off of in terms of what our school day will look like. So what we anticipate doing is really diving into that over the next couple of weeks. I did invite the larger community as a sounding board to a subsequent session in late July, and then we will pull them together in late August as well. Forming a scheduling committee to really dive into the nuances of this. We've broad stroked it to this point. We know that once we get that final guidance for September, we do understand that that may change, but we feel really confident we're putting a team together to build schedules out from whatever that guidance might be. If you could go to the next slide, Mr. Dillon. So a couple of things that we're looking at from a student support and the whole child end. The transition to 9th grade is traditionally the most difficult transition in the K-12 spectrum for students, absent a global pandemic, absent the racial unrest that's happening across the country. So we know that we need to develop tools to transition those 9th graders. They're not physically in the building. We are looking at a whole host of ways in which we can engage them and, most importantly, start to build community at the start of the school year. And so we're working through a very specific program, if it has to be virtual for 9th graders, we will utilize that. And I should say that, you know, we're really iterating off of our summer programs and how we do this, our summer boot camp, the college applications has been remote, all of our summer programs for ESY, for original credit, the Advanced Placement Summer Bridge Program, they're all remote as well, and we're working with the faculty and staff in delivering those and learning from that as we go as preparation for September. We also know that, to give folks a sense of scale again, there are approximately little over 1,000 individuals within our system that qualify for free indoor reduced lunch. So we know that nutrition and meal services will be a critical component to whatever we do in the fall. Obviously, if schools are closed, there are a number of students in our system that are very much school-dependent for meals and the such, and we're working with what that looks like, utilizing our school nurses have been really valuable in providing input throughout all of this, and we've met with them, you know, Mr. Dillon's met with them pretty much on a weekly basis, so they'll be, they've been an important cog in what we're looking to do. And then obviously, the counseling component of this, our guidance staff, our student assistance counselors, how we are supporting our students across the spectrum here with that start to the school year, we know has to be work that we're going to dive into on those first 30 days. We've done a very, very strong job of, you can mute whoever's making noise. I think that the our at-risk students, our students that are school fragile, and we are really, we've done a terrific job of supporting them and identifying them throughout this. Mr. Shaw, if you could stop the recording, because this is getting playback and I'm hearing the presentation, please stop recording at this point in time. Thank you. So we've identified individual students across the system in really remarkable ways, with a lot of adults along the way as the touchstones to understanding that those students were either not engaged for a reason, struggling in the remote environment, and we've continued to work with them and we'll continue to build off of that database that we really put together in the spring with the students who have been in our system already. Obviously, the 9th graders need their own transition. And making sure that our kids have access to Chromebooks and Wi-Fi. I was very pleased with how we were able to distribute Chromebooks in the spring, and we were able to provide Wi-Fi access through working with some phone providers for students that didn't have Wi-Fi at home. And it was, from the time we shut our doors on March 13th, it was within the next week or so where we made sure we had every single student connected in this district. And when you're loaning out almost 500 Chromebooks and you have a number of students without Wi-Fi access at home, the way in which we were able to turn that around and how quickly we were, something I was very proud about. So we know that that individual attention is going to be incredibly important at the start of the school year, and we're rethinking those first 30 days of school. Obviously, the academics have to commence, but there's a whole lot of community building that also needs to take place. So, Mr. Dillon, if you could transition to the next slide. From a health and safety standpoint, some of the things we're looking at, and it's up on the screen here, we're not sure whether we'll be mandated to screen for temperatures or not, we are prepared to do so. We've purchased and in the process of finalizing the purchase in some places, the necessary equipment to do that. Our nurses were all trained through Johns Hopkins program around contact tracing, and so we have a base, if that is part of the plan, we're prepared for that. Face coverings and masks, you know, that we've ordered, you know, a great deal of masks to be prepared to provide if we need to. Our physical spaces, we've mapped out every single room in each of our high schools at this point in time, we know the square footage of each room, we know what the capacity is. We've changed out all of our air filters and our filtration systems. There were some good questions from the community forum around some of our rooms that don't have windows or might be enclosed in some other ways, and we're making sure, A, that we double-check all those ventilation systems, and B, if there's something there that's not optimum to manage, to relocate those classrooms as well if need be. We are identifying our large group areas for which we could repurpose the classrooms and then identifying what kinds of physical equipment needs to be there, whether that's some kind of plexiglass or the such that you may have seen at your local deli, you know, we're working on that equipment as well. We are part of, I'm proud to say, we started a cooperative through the county. I'll be down at the Monmouth County Sheriff's Office on Thursday, this Thursday of this week. We're distributing face masks, gowns and some other equipment to all the districts in Monmouth County. One of the things that we had requested at the start of this is that if every school district is going to be in the process of purchasing personal protective equipment, PPE, we should be doing that in a collaborative manner to most effectively purchase that equipment. We are putting hand sanitizer stations in every single classroom, making our, in the process of making our bathrooms touch-free so that they're all motion-activated and such, and then developing specific protocols. And again, we will follow the state guidance when it's finalized, but around what happens when you have a student or a staff who may be exhibiting symptoms, may be, may have been exposed, and that might be an isolation room. We've repurposed our nursing offices at this point in time to provide an isolation space if that's needed. And then obviously, we'll be following all those protocols before any student or staff member is able to return. We do also anticipate, we do know that we have faculty and staff as well as students with pre-existing medical conditions, and we'll work through the state guidance to make sure that we protect the safety of those individuals as well. Mr. Dillon, if you can go to the next slide. So a couple of just big chunk movements that we're looking at, you know, obviously, transportation, you know, so from the start of the day, when a student is picked up, you know, and for us, that's, you have somewhere around 8,000 students that are eligible for busing, and that's a serious process for us, obviously. If we will follow the state guidelines on the busing, not sure what they will look like, but to give the board a sense of scale, if you have a 54-passenger bus, you're looking at anywhere between 12 and 15 or so students if you're socially distant. A lot of our bus runs are actually, you know, vans, they're not the 54-passenger bus, so that's something to consider as well. Again, the Bucks County guidance that came out today talked about three foot and two to a row on each bus with face masks. For us, there's no way that we could make four and five bus runs, it's just financially not even possible. We had looked at moving our high schools to the same time several years ago, and it was a $5 or $6 million cost to do that, and so running multiple bus runs is not an option. What that looks like from the day-to-day, what I'm seeing, a lot of the states that are ahead of us in providing guidance have really put that onus on parents to verify that they've checked their student in the morning. We'll see what that looks like once that guidance comes out, but obviously, we're preparing to work through that. We also know that when you enter school, that's going to have to be controlled. We're purchasing large temperature screens if needed, where kids would walk through and be able to move through in a very quick manner. We're going to set up canopies outside of each of the six high schools for weather, and we'll be prepared for students entering school. The movement in school, we know we are going to use signage and the such and repurpose our hallways to be one-way hallways, one-way stairwells, stagger our bell schedules from one section of the building to the next. And again, we don't know what the numbers will look like on a given school day, but we do know that we're going to have to control the movement within the building as well. Elementary schools, you know, might have it a bit easier on that, because you may have a student who's in a classroom with a particular teacher, but they're there for all their core subjects, you know. In high school, it's a little bit different, students move for their core subjects, whether that is movement of faculty and staff and students remaining in place, we're not sure, but it's not clean like elementary schools. So you may have 15 students that are in a math class, but they all have different English classes. And so the movement in school is something that we're going to spend a great deal of time on, once we know what our schedule is going to look like, that we're going to build out. And then obviously, exiting school in a safe manner is just as important as how we enter the school day, and so we'll control that with a staggered release as well. Traditionally, now, the buses line up, kids sort of mill around, get on their buses and go, and we know that that's not going to be possible in the fall, so we're building out systems and structures to ensure that that's done safely. You know, as far as like extracurriculars and the such, the NJSIA put out guidance that, you know, some sort of modified practices can begin on July 13th. I'm not certain that we're going to do that here in the Freo Regional High School District, we're going to take a deep look at that. You know, right now, our buildings are closed and we're not prepared to accommodate socially-distanced students at this point in time, that doesn't mean it doesn't change before July 13th, but as we sit today, we're going to take a little deeper look at what that may look like for activities, what that looks like for the fall is anybody's guess, there is a sort of hierarchy of risk of sports and athletics, and you have things like the play and band performances and all that, so all of those things need to be thought through and managed with whatever the final state guidance is. And then we also have plans in place for unexpected short-term closures, and so if the virus peaks again, if there's an increase in numbers, and we know that suddenly we need to close the doors for two weeks, we will transition to remote learning and we'll have a plan in place for that as well. So this is, you know, this is what's going to consume us over the summer as we head to the fall. This is what we've really turned our attention to at this point in time, and this is why it's become critical for us to at least know what that guidance is from the state so that we can begin to so that we can begin to not spend wasted energy on scenarios that will never come to be, rather focus on whatever that scenario for the fall will be, understanding that that could shift at, at any moment in time. And so when I, when I delivered this presentation to the community group, there were a lot of questions around standardized assessments, SATs, ACTs and the such. College Board was looking to do some sort of onsite testing in August and September. You know, we would not approve that here at this point in time. I, I'm not going to, before I open our doors in September, I'm not going to open our doors prior to that for hundreds of kids to take a test and embark on the management of that. It's just not safe. And so we won't be a host site. I'm not sure where the college board will pivot off of that. I would anticipate that most high schools would probably land in the same decision-making matrix that we're landing with it saying that it's, it's just not feasible at this point in time. We'll see where that goes. Obviously, universities have lifted their testing requirements all the way through to the class of 2021 in many cases. And obviously, there were no state assessments this year. They were all canceled. So we'll see what that may look like next year. Other than that, I will, if the board members have questions, I'd be happy to entertain them at this point in time.
Hello?
Yep, we can hear you, Michael.
You can hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. With all these different scenarios and all these expenses, I'm just curious, like, from a financial standpoint, how do you wrap your arms around trying to get some sort of handle as to the estimated cost of all this?
It's a great question, Mr. Messinger.
Right?
So, so here, here's the, and that's the, that's the unknown. And I think that there's a fine balancing act that's going on right now. No one wants to commit to purchasing anything that they ultimately might not need, right? However, we need to be prepared for multiple scenarios and the purchasing of that equipment is going to be a critical process, right? And so what the state's role in that is and the department's, I'm not certain. But I, I think that, you know, in a scenario like this, the reality is, you know, we're going to err on the side of being over-prepared rather than under-prepared. And we're not going to, I, I don't ever want to come to something, come August 28th and we're ready to open up and we don't have X. And so we're unable to open our doors because of that. And so we're going to follow that guidance closely, but we're already looking at other, other state plans to see what they look like and what we might learn from them in order to plan effectively. And, and that's, that's what we're doing. But from a, from a fiscal standpoint, you know, we, we're receiving about $500,000 in CARES funding, which is frankly, compared to what the cost of managing all of this is going to ultimately be is, is nothing but a drop in the bucket. So I'm hoping that there's a, a subsequent wave of federal funding that comes for schools. And then we're also managing the potential that we may, we really may have additional state aid cuts with the budget being struck in September now, rather than as it was traditionally in, in June. So there's a lot of unknown right now and we're going to try and manage that as effectively as, as possible. And that doesn't even go into the purchasing of all this equipment, what that looks like, right? And scrambling for that and what that supply chain process may be. So a lot, a lot to do over the next two months or so.
Now, do you, with respect, and I don't know how much you've talked about this with colleagues from other states, but the states that are ahead of New Jersey, has those, have those state governments implied that, you know, we're demanding you spend $10 million extra dollars on all this? We're going to fund that? Like, the whole situation could be crazy, particularly if the state is going to cut funding and require millions of dollars in expenditures and we already don't have any money. It's, you know, it can really be crazy.
Yeah, that, that, so that, so what I've seen from some colleagues in a couple of other states are much, much less restrictive environment than we're in in New Jersey right now. You know, obviously, the Northeast was particularly hard-hit, New York, New Jersey in particular. And so I think as a, you know, that necessitated some, some harsher restrictions than many of my colleagues in other states are dealing with at this point in time. A good friend of mine from Ohio, I was on a session with him a couple of weeks ago and, you know, they were already back to practicing and the such, you know, for athletic teams. So different states are, are dealing with this very, very differently. The funding issue in New Jersey was already an issue prior to the COVID crisis. So we were already facing those S2 cuts, which aren't going anywhere. To layer this on top of it in, in a state that, you know, it looks like for all appearances is pretty much gone broke during this, I think that that positions us to really be in a terrible position for the fall. And what that looks like financially, I'm not certain. I do know that whatever happens, there will probably be things that we, we purchase or utilize and don't fully utilize, right? Because we're not sure of how this is all going to play out and we know that this is a shifting landscape.
So, Doctor, if you were a parent listening to this tonight, so we have scenarios for everything. We also have a scenario if it's going to be normal, normal opening, we're ready for that too. So I go back to how tomorrow and see all the parents. We're ready for everything, right? We're, we have our roadmap for three or four different scenarios where...
Yeah, and, and that's going to come to life over the next couple of weeks in particular, Mr. Bruno. So yeah, you know, I, look, I feel confident that we are understanding the wide-ranging needs of what we need to prepare for. The devil will be in the details with all of that. And so, you know, that's where, so there's, there's got to be a balance from the state of guidelines and flexibility, right? And so you, you put some parameters in place and then let schools meet those parameters, but you got to put some parameters down. And, and, you know, I, I'll give you the perfect example that, you know, we're seeing mixed guy, when you see guidance that's just not clear for everybody, if you look at the, and how, how districts graded in, in the spring. You know, there were, there, if you look at the DOE survey, there was at least 60 different processes that districts used to grade. To me, in districts that may not be as well-run, you know, that's, that puts a child at a disadvantage. And so what I expect from the state is some, some clear parameters to work with it. What I hope I don't see is states can do X and then there's no guidance to it or it's actually, it's a false narrative because you can't do X with all the parameters that are put in place, right? And so that's what I'm hoping not to see. And, and that's why we're really anxiously awaiting those state guidelines so we can begin to really understand what are the lanes that we need to work within and, and, and how do we most safely do that for our entire school community?
One more question, Doctor. If a parent does not want to send their kids back, I don't know why that would be, but if they don't want to send their kids back to school in the fall, are we going to have something for them like home instruction? Is there a mandate to that, like?
So that's a great question and that's one of the things that the various state restart committees have asked. You know, what, what are those parameters going to be for? And I can tell you, we have a number of parents who have informed us that without a vaccine, they will not send their kids back. So that, that's a real concern. You know, we were, we were under the home instruction rules for the spring right now. You know, I think home instruction moving forward as a result of this experience will look differently for children anyway. What that looks like for kids in, in our system, again, we will abide by whatever those parameters are. It, it is important to note that currently, you know, children, if school's in session, they are expected to come to school. So I'm not sure where the state's going to land on the numbers, which I'm sure will be quite high, of students and families that do refuse to come back. So we, you know, for me, we have to see what, what does the state lay out as the expectation for that? And then we'll work within that framework.
Thank you.
I have a question about fall sports. Now, I, I read an article in the paper, was it on July 1st, schools are able to have preseason practice?
July 13th.
Oh, July 13th.
Correct.
So in the rules and regulations that were spelled out for that, I don't know, you know, I assume you looked them over. But hypothetically, the requirements that are there for health or COVID-19 prevention, like just by looking at those requirements off the top of your head, would that add expenses right off the bat or are trainers, they're getting paid and it's all part of that?
That won't necessarily, the, the guidance for that won't necessarily add expenses because you would have, you know, your coaching staff there and it's outdoors. What it does add in, in my estimation is, is, is an element of exposure and risk for the school system if something does go wrong in those scenarios. And, and, you know, when, 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 when I'm seeing school districts, you know, put out things that say, hey, there's legislation pending that you might waive, we might be able to waive physicals for a year. That, that is frankly, the most asinine thing I've ever heard. So, you know, we're, we're going to put kids on a field to play without a physical? The exposure to that kind of stuff is extreme in my opinion, and I would defer to Mr. Toscano on that. And I'm, I'm no attorney, but I certainly know some, some bad ideas when I see them. And that's a terrible idea. And so all of that needs to be worked out. And I think that the, the, the process for which we would manage that needs to be worked out and clear. There's not necessarily an added cost, but I do think with some of these scenarios, there's an added risk. They start when the, they start when the, the season starts traditionally, like whether it's August 12th, 13th, 15th, whatever.
So what, so excuse my ignorance on this issue. So let's say July 13th, the state gives everyone permission to...
No, that's another date. That's a date that they tell the kids, go work out, no contact, join leagues, go to the beach, play football. It has nothing to do with the schools. I mean, we never really let our teams use our facilities.
It, it depends on the teams and the buildings though. Some, some have, some certainly do. It depends on the individual team and the coach's offseason program. And so that's certainly been something that we've, we've dealt with. It certainly differs, you know, across the district, but it...
I mean, most coaches are going to stay away. They only can go to those kind of practices. They stay away from the buildings, maybe for football.
Yeah, that, that's not how much, how it is. That, that's how it used to be, Mr. Bruno. It's not so much like that anymore. Folks are, folks have been here in the summer. Yeah.
Our coaches are actually on our fields in the summer with their kids?
Yes.
This summer, maybe not.
So did we, did you tell the coaches, like, stay away, don't do anything until you hear from us?
Well, we haven't, we haven't engaged, we haven't required our coaches to, to do any, any virtual coaching. A, a number of our coaches have done that regardless, you know, and stayed, stayed in contact with their student athletes and their, and their staffs and the such. So a lot of our folks have done a lot of that work on their own voluntarily.
Yeah, I was just asking, I didn't know outside, if starting on July 13th, these, you know, coaches are going to start up.
Now, there, there's a number of districts that are going to jump right back to that. We're going to, we're going to tread a little bit more cautiously on that and explore what that, what that really means from an exposure standpoint.
Dr. Sampson, I had a question. When you talked earlier about the state giving parameters and then maybe leaving it up to districts to kind of play within those parameters, do you envision a scenario in which perhaps the county will take a lead on that? Because, you know, counties vary based upon population density and different, you know, demographics and whatnot. Do you have any thoughts on that?
Can you say that last part again, Mr. Precios? I didn't hear.
About the county, the county's superintendents maybe having a role, the state delegating to the county sups to, you know, give the, you know, each county its own deference as far as how to handle certain reopening procedures.
Yeah, so that, that's where I think, that, that's where places will get themselves in trouble, you know? And, and so we're looking for some, some uniform guidance. I do think that they may come down and it might be something that, that is related to whether there's an outbreak or a spike in COVID-19 in one place versus another that might change some of that guidance. But for me, it's a real dangerous thing. So, so if they said, you know, Middlesex County is going to do this and Monmouth County can do that, well, we, we border Middlesex County. And so, you know, that, that's going to create all different divergent pathways of, of answering those questions. I think the state needs to come down with some uniform guidelines or framework that everybody can work within. And then there's got to be opportunities to iterate within that framework for each individual school system. But I think you need the framework for everybody. Other, other questions?
I have a question on the busing that we didn't use for the trips, sports trips in the spring.
Yep.
Was there, I, I, I know you probably went over this, but I don't remember. Was there a savings because you did not or is it a contracted?
There, there's potentially, and I'll let Mr. Boyce talk to specifics about that. But one of the things that, you know, there was some federal legislation that, that made it very, Mr. Toscano can add to this too, that made it, you know, put, put the onus on, on, on districts to, you know, pay for services that weren't rendered without necessarily verifying whether or not a particular bus company laid off staff weren't even incurring certain expenses anyway. And so from our perspective, obviously, we have our in-house and then we have our subcontractors. And we're, we're negotiating at this point with our, our various subcontractors because they're all in very different positions as well, depending on how they responded to the crisis. And Sean, I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
The, the trips are distinctly different than the contracted routes in that they're, they're, they're one time, it's not, and Mr. Toscano and I had this conversation earlier today. There, there's no additional cost associated with them if they don't run the trip, right? So they're not hiring additional people, buying additional buses, that kind of thing. And, and we've always had scenarios where trips have been canceled or, or things of that nature where the contractors didn't do the trip as they were awarded. And, and it's never been the case that they've been paid for that. So, yeah, there, there is a savings to, to go back to answer your question directly. There is savings, but that, that is in the current budget year, right? Which comes to a conclusion next week. And then, so it's not as if we can repurpose it into the subsequent budget year, you know, at this time. I, I think overall financially and some of the questions that have come up here and Dr. Sampson addressed the question that we, we need to be prepared to, to open school under these scenarios. So we're going to be strategic about when we purchase certain things. We do have some CARES money to work with and FEMA also is reimbursing the district for 75% of certain costs, PPE costs for, for staff and, and other costs, but to relatively small scale. I think what's going to happen here is that we're going to make our way to September. We're going to open in whatever form we're going to open as. And, and then we'll have to reshape our budget at that time going forward. The other major player in, in the financial timeline is ultimately what state aid will become for next year. As of right now, there has been no change to the amount of state aid that was originally issued back in March and part of our adopted budget, but that could change. And so I think that once we move closer to September, we'll get better information as we go forward.
Thank you.
Any other questions on just the, the process for reopening, things that are occurring now? Anything else that any of the board members would like to discuss about that?
Okay, I should question, are there waivers that are going to be, COVID-19 waivers going to be signed?
Yeah, interesting question, Ms. Lavin. Yeah, for the athletics, you know, there, there's a whole process of checking off things on a daily basis, basically, around checking for symptoms and the such, making sure that a child... around checking for symptoms and such, making sure that a child doesn't have a fever. And so I would anticipate that even, that will be expanded even beyond the athletic end of this, that when we're back in the fall, there will be some sort of process around that required.
Because I'm just thinking of most people that had, you know, developments that are in a community, they have pools. Everyone has to sign a waiver.
Yep. We'll be there as well.
Yeah.
Sign them up. So I'm going to pivot off of that. I have a couple other items in my report. One is I did send the board our CUSAC determination, you know, our corrective action plan, which, you know, candidly, I was, we were upset to even be on to begin with because it was a direct correlation to students not taking a test that they did not have to pass to graduate. So if you can follow the sense of that, it was the first time we were ever deemed not highly, not high performing in a category at all in CUSAC. We appealed that, just so the board knows, at the time last year when that happened, we utilized our SAT data and our ACT data in a, I believe it was about a seven or eight page appeal to the state, where I said, that's fine, the state assessments, which were parked at that time, a number of our students simply didn't sit for because they didn't have to. And, but if you look at this data, we can demonstrate that our kids are college and career ready. The answer I got back from the state on that was we did not have 95% participation in the state assessment, therefore the finding stayed. It's utterly ridiculous, but it's something that we need to deal with. We went on to our corrective action plan and demonstrated that we were encouraging students to sit for the assessment and moved into the high performing category. So just sharing that with the board as well. And then in terms of as we move forward, you know, the governor today lifted or increased the amount of folks that are allowed to be indoors to 25% capacity. So if that holds true, then we will be able to hold our July meeting in person. And obviously, folks that still want to do that remotely will be able to do so as well. But it will be a refreshing break from the Zoom world in which we are presently living. That concludes my report, so I will kick it back to you, Mr. President.
Okay, now is the time for board reports, of which we have two. The first one is finance, and I believe Esche is the chairperson on that. Are you on board, Esche? Can you hear me?
There he is. Oh, there he is.
Yeah, do you guys hear me?
What's text, Carl?
For finance.
Yeah, I think Michael was the one who was supposed to give that one.
Oh, okay, fine. Michael, please.
All right. So there were three main topics that we talked about. This was back on June 8th. The first one was the update on the maintenance projects. Second one was we talked about a potential referendum. And the third was an update on the financial position. So with respect to the maintenance projects, the administration has been meeting with, about the mercury floors that have to be replaced in the gyms. And if you look on the agenda tonight, we're awarding a contract for that. There's actually three companies involved, right? There's one company that is getting rid of the existing rubber floors. There's an environmental person. And then there's the company that's going to install the new floors. Then we talked about in the auditorium at Manalapan, the installation of the air conditioning is done there. You know, there's some cosmetic things that have to be taken care of after the installation. But the AC is up and running in Manalapan. And I believe over the last week or so, the chairs and the floors were put back. The floor was being worked on back on June 8th. And I think the chairs were put in last week. And the whole project's going to be done by July 1st. We talked about the auditorium balcony at Borough. Balcony secure, ready to put it back together, replacing the ceiling. And the work's going to be done over the summer. It's a two to three week job. As you may recall, repairing the ceiling there was part of the referendum that got voted down. And then lastly, a PA system at Colts Neck has to be replaced. We hired a contractor and he came in two weeks ago to finalize what he needs to do to start the work by July 1st. That's another thing that was in the referendum that failed. That has to be taken care of. With respect to a referendum, we had bandied about going back in 2020, this election day, but given what has transpired in the world and in New Jersey, that really is off the table. Given everybody's current financial status, you know, we're not going to go back and ask to borrow money at this point in time. So we are looking to 2021. And, you know, if we want to go back in 2021, this is something that will have to be discussed in March. And of course, if you remember the referendum that failed, of both of them, there were security enhancements. Some of the government grants, security grants have been made available from the state. So we will be able to apply for that money and use that for some of the security enhancements that got voted down by the public. And as a matter of fact, we're voting tonight on the architect to get moving on the application for the security grant. And then lastly, with respect to the financial position, we discussed the savings that we realized. And I know this was something that Mark had been talking about, given that we were closed, save money on buses, subs, et cetera, et cetera. So we did save some money there. And then we also had a long discussion on busing, which was referenced earlier in our meeting tonight about the fact that the state is looking for us to be paying for the services that weren't used. And we talked about participation fees. Not going to happen this year because we have no idea what we are going to be offering in terms of sports and activities. And basically, we talked about some other financial issues going forward. If we see hybrid model, Dr. Sampson went over how much that's going to cost us. You know, to offset these costs, there's going to have to be changes made. So we heard a lot of the thought process there of cost reductions to offset that. And that basically is what transpired.
Thank you, Mr. Messenger. And while the screen's still on, I know we have one more meeting committee session that took place.
Mr. Acetola, if I can interrupt for one moment? And before we go to policy, you know, and Mr. Dillon, if you could share your screen one more time for Maya Poole. I was told that when we came online, that the recording was not live. And I know that Maya's parents and Maya was taking a look as well. She's our 10th grade teen driver safety winner from Freehold Township High School. And what I will say is that obviously, this entire session is recorded. So if it wasn't, if it didn't pop right on YouTube the second that we came live, the entire session will be available online regardless. But I do want to congratulate Maya and thank her for taking the time to compete because apparently that was, when I recognized her earlier in the meeting, that was cut off from YouTube. Thank you.
Okay, so I could go back to Mr. Bruno and ask him for the report on policy. Am I correct?
Yes, I can give you this report. We had a Zoom two weeks ago. And some pretty important ones. The first one is domestic violence policy. It's a mandatory policy. It's required by New Jersey Civil Service Commission to develop a uniform domestic violence policy for the public employees to adopt, which encourages public employees who are victims of domestic violence to seek assistance from our human resources officers. The uniform domestic policy incorporates unpaid leave to employees who were victims of sexually violent crimes if they had a child, a parent, a spouse, or a civil union partner was a victim of domestic violence, any sexual violence offense. This policy, 1581, is divided into two sections. One outlining requirements of domestic policy and the other one, policy for the requirements due to the New Jersey Safe Act. The second policy, administration of medication. This is also mandatory. The policy requires the Board of Education to permit self-medication by a student for anal inefficiency in addition to other health issues such as asthma or any other life-threatening disease or allergic reaction. The new statute addresses the administration of hydrochlorazone as a similar way we administrate the Effepen. The policy outlines the administration of this medication and makes the school nurse in charge of the administration of that drug. The outline also requires the training and the protocols for administration and our nurses. The third one has to do with construction. This is a revision of policy 7243. The New Jersey Department of Education has published a memorandum titled, "The Contractor Employee's Procedure for Criminal History Checks." The revision clarifies that only the contracted service provider employees who have close contact with our students are subject to criminal history background checks. This policy is mandated. The fourth one, 8210, the school year is revised. The New Jersey Department of Education entitled, "Opening of School or Dismissal," addresses the issues related to the school calendar. This policy has minor revisions. The revision includes listing the duration of the school year, the school year to be no more than 180 school days, recommending the dates of day first to have the school calendar approved by local Board of Educations, expanding the circumstances, you know, situations into which the school calendar can be altered by the board during the year. The fourth one, school year policy is also outlined, requiring a school day and a shortened school day. It indicates that the school board's policy should detail the starting and the ending, defining the day of the school year. In the event of a shortened day, the revised policy guide must indicate the Board of Education to approve a school calendar, including the days and the times that we are in session, including our shortened days. This policy now requires an annual board approval, making this policy mandated. The fifth policy, 8462, reporting of missing and abused children. It's Public Law 2019, Chapter 178, was approved, NJSA. This statute requires the Board of Education to display information in our school buildings about any child or family as a hotline to report any child who is abused or missing. This new law requires the information to be in a format in a language that is clear and simple. The information shall be posted around the school. The policy guide, 8462, has been revised to incorporate the requirements of this new mandated policy. That is it, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Bruno.
Thank you.
We're coming towards the end, public participation. But first, Mr. Boyce, are there any changes to the agenda which you wish to note?
I have several that I need to note. The first is on H3, which the third item down, Jody Catman, is listed. The position is listed as student academic coordinator. That should be student assistance coordinator. So with that modification. Also, if you go to J5 and 6, there are bid awards, as noted by Mr. Messinger in the finance report, for the remediation work on the gym floors in five of our schools. Two different contractors were awarded bids and they are listed on J5 and 6. And finally, the item on, that's listed as K19, acceptance of a security grant. So with the preliminary guidance, it was my hope that we would get the authorization to submit that grant. It's still at a preliminary stage. And currently, the requirement is that board resolution must be submitted affirming the submission of the grant application, which is a point that we're not at at this point. So K19 will be removed from consideration for tonight's agenda. And that is all that I had for changes to the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Boyce. As is obvious, this is all being done virtually. So we had to do a little bit of change with public participations and participation and comments have been solicited electronically and submitted to you. Do you have any?
I do. We have one comment from the Freehold Regional Education Association. So this is authored by Sarah Reichenbacher, Joe Sananacida, and Pat Mahan Jr. And it reads, "Good evening. As the school year comes to a close and we prepare for an uncertain time ahead, we would like to thank the members of the Freehold Regional Education Association for their exceptional dedication to the profession and for their commitment towards and care of our students. This past March, with little knowledge of what was to come, our teachers and educational support professionals proceeded without hesitation and pivoted seamlessly into an entirely unprecedented remote learning and teaching environment. They created new resources, found ways to engage with students, and successfully worked through complicated situations to ensure that every student in the regional continued to receive an exceptional education. We hope our students and their families know how much we miss them and we wish our graduates all the best as they embark upon their new adventures. We acknowledge that there will be obstacles ahead in the upcoming year. Whether remote, hybrid, or physically in the schoolhouse, we are prepared to face all challenges with the same care, compassion, dedication, and professionalism with which we met the difficulties of these past few months. Members of the Freehold Regional Education Association are unified in the belief that an exceptional public school education benefits not only the students who pass through our hallways, but our communities as a whole. We remain steadfast in our commitment to the Freehold Regional High School District's students and their families and wish a safe and healthy summer for all." And that is the only comment that I have for tonight.
Well, on behalf of the board, I'd certainly like to say thank you for that comment. It's much appreciated because a lot of work, a lot of work has gone into the past few months. And it's been a staggering time, to say the least, and it hit us unexpectedly.
Mr. Acetola, can I interject for just a moment?
Sure.
I know this session's recorded. And so what I'm understanding right now is that the YouTube live feed had some issues the first 10 to 12 minutes of this. And so what I would ask folks to do would be just to take a look at the recording once it's up on the website, in case they missed the first couple of minutes. But, you know, in listening to the statement from the FREA, you know, I do want to reiterate that, you know, our faculty and staff here in the district, you know, stood on their heads through this. And this was a challenging time. And it was unexpected, unknown. And people did the best that they possibly could do collaboratively. And so I just want to echo those sentiments as well. I had said those at the start of the presentation, but I'm fearful that that may have been cut off on the live stream tonight. So I just want to make sure that I rectify that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Well, it's certainly apropos to make that comment at this point because it's such an incredible time that we've been going through and an incredible response by the administrative staff of Freehold Regional High School District. With the noted changes, as reported by Mr. Boyce, may I have a motion to approve H1 through L3?
Motion.
Has she left? I believe?
Yes.
Is there any discussion? There are none. Can I have a roll call, please, Sean?
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Higley? You're muted, Mrs. Higley.
Yes, but I need to abstain on H5 regarding Sarah Phillips for Howell High School.
Thank you, Mrs. Lavin.
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi? Oh, you're muted.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Assitola?
Yes. Okay, now we're moving on to old business. Are there any members wishing to discuss old business? Are there any members wishing to discuss new business?
Yes, Mr. President, Mark Parisi here. I do have an item of new business that I wanted to have some board discussion on, if I may.
Sure, recognize.
Okay, so as you are aware, I am the delegate to the New Jersey School Board Association, and they have their delegate assembly this Saturday. And there were two resolutions that I submitted to you that we briefly discussed. And if I can, the first resolution relates to, and just for people that are watching and for some of the board members that are unfamiliar with what the delegate assembly is, it's, you know, all the, each district has a representative that is a delegate that goes to this assembly, and they discuss resolutions, consider resolutions, have discussion on them. And basically, they vote on them, and the New Jersey School Board Association takes a policy position based upon the vote from, you know, from that delegate assembly. So this year, in this coming Saturday on June 27th, there's two resolutions that have been submitted. The first resolution was submitted, and I'll just read the synopsis. It's very short. I don't believe that it has any application to our district, but it's a resolution from the Alpha Bloomsbury and Poat Kong Boards of Education in Warren County, and they propose new policy language seeking to reduce the threshold requirements for representation of a sending board on the receiving board of education. If the board has any specific consensus on how they feel about that particular resolution, I'd be happy to hear it. So if and when I do attend the delegate assembly, I could vote accordingly, or at that time, if I decide to change my mind based on information that I received. Mr. Toscano, Dr. Sampson, does anyone have any thoughts or board members on that first resolution?
I would just share with you, Mr. Parisi, not as a superintendent, but as a two-term board member, that it's unfortunate that politics play such a role in some other boards, and I'm thankful that they don't hear. That will be my comment.
Okay. As far as the second resolution is concerned, I believe this does have direct application to how our board functions, and I think that our board will find much more interest in Resolution Number 2. And this resolution came from the Springfield Board of Education in Burlington County, which proposes to new policy language requiring the constituent district of a regional board of education to fill a board vacancy rather than the regional board, which currently has the responsibility to fill the vacancy. And essentially, what they're asking here is that the current process for filling a vacancy on a regional board is that the regional board itself will appoint somebody to fill that vacancy. And this particular resolution doesn't feel as though that is representative of democracy. And they, since our regional board is made up of eight municipalities, and let's say, for example, that I resign for my position, right now, my fellow eight board members would appoint somebody to fill my seat. If this policy position were to change and the state were to change legislature reflecting at, it's possible that instead of our board appointing someone to fill my seat, that decision would be made by the Howell K8 Board of Education. So I think there's going to be a lot of interesting debate on this particular resolution, and I would like to hear what some of my fellow board members would feel about something like this, if it were to end up changing legislatively, about a regional board vacancy being filled by a local K8 board or a local board.
So, Mark, it wouldn't be filled by the town? It would be filled by the K8?
That's what they're proposing.
Now...
We have no relationship with the K8.
Right.
Right. And what's also interesting is, remember, in the regional, the way our elections go as well, you know, it could be multiple towns. So it could get very muddied.
That's true.
Very flippant.
I just wanted to put my input because I was in that position. I was in '22. I was appointed to the Freehold Regional only because someone, you know, left unexpectedly. But you're, the principal and superintendent at the time just looked for someone from Farmingdale, and they knew that I was a Farmingdale resident and that I was a parent. So that's basically what we do here, isn't it, until that position goes to election?
Yes, it depends on when the vacancy is created. Yes, that's exactly the process.
So I mean, they appointed because they said, approached me because they knew I was a Farmingdale resident. So our board now would approach someone from Howell and say, "Would you like to be on the board until we have the following election?"
I just don't feel a K through H has a responsibility for electing a board member. They don't even know how we work. It's totally different. And like you said, some people have two representations from the Freehold Township, Freehold Borough are kind of mixed with Heshi. Part of the vote goes to two, so it doesn't even make sense. So who would you have appoint them, the Borough or Township?
Same thing with Coltsnake Marlboro.
Coltsnake Marlboro, yeah.
It's politically motivated, folks. It's someone that wants to pass legislation to get their hooks into another school district. That's what it comes down to. It's so naked and overt. It's actually embarrassing to me that they would put this forward and try to pass it off for something that it's not, which is naked political ambition. So I will speak plainly about how I feel about it. And if New Jersey school boards has any iota of integrity about it, they wouldn't promote that in any given way, which I don't think they will, actually.
Actually, it's the school board's recommendation to approve this resolution, changing the way in which the vacancy on a regional board of education would be filled. And I happen to feel, disagree with that. I feel that there's sovereignty issues here. We're a separate board, separate jurisdiction, separate tax levy. And frankly, our nine board members make decisions on a weekly and monthly basis that affect all eight municipalities that make up our district. And for them to have a particular issue with us filling a vacancy of an unexpired term, presumably, I don't see what the big deal is with that and why they would go to this length to now want to have that done by a K8. If a municipality has that big of an issue being a part of a regional, there are other mechanisms that they can pursue to not be part of a regional.
Yeah.
That's what comes with being part of a regional.
Yeah, well said, Mr. Parisi. And I'm going to even take it one step further because I'm going to dig into the origins of that. And I'm going to ask Mr. Toscano to help me on that because for school boards to support that is demonstrating a lack of understanding of how regional systems even work. And so that's, if school boards is representing us, and with the mandated dues that we pay to school boards, I would think they would do a better job of representing a regional district, especially the largest in the state of Jersey.
Yeah, and I'll even add this too, and you probably know the data on this better. I think that there's much fewer regional high school districts in New Jersey than any other district.
Yeah, there are 31. There are 31 in the state. So, you know, 31 out of 600-plus districts, so very small number. You're right.
So you're going to have delegates, and this is fine, you know, but there are, I think, a majority of the delegates that will be there on Saturday will be representing districts other than a limited purpose regional high school district that will be voting on something that affects how we function when it has no applicability to them, which is interesting.
That's a great point.
Where does that vote go? Like, if this is passed this Saturday, where does that vote go to the school?
It just becomes a policy position for school boards as far as their lobbying is concerned because there is legislation related to this particular resolution that's now, I believe, pending with the assembly. So once school boards, you know, takes a policy position on this, then they will lobby accordingly based upon that position.
Yeah, I think that's, I think it just demonstrates a complete lack of understanding of the governance structure of high school regionals in particular, for which, you know, they are tasked with helping to lead in that governance, you know? So that's a dangerous position to be. That's a nakedly political, ambitious maneuver that they seem to be supporting, which I would, I would really question the origins. Mark, I don't know, Toscano, if you want to chime in, but that's, that would be subjecting this district to outside governance of folks who've never even for a second been privy to any of the conversations of how this place runs and operates, and nor any of the conversations that these nine board members have had about what, you know, what constitutes how the district should be governed. I just think that that's incredibly dangerous. Quite frankly, it's a very easy position to take from the point you just made, Mr. Parisi, because it's only 31 districts. And so they'll pander to the larger numbers, which is what they initially did with S2 as well, and to band it 100 districts together to challenge their lack of position on that. So I've got, I've got some real problems with what school boards is doing in that instance for the good of this district.
Dr. Sampson, I'll go one further. Just, I'll chime in as well. Just, you're hitting the nail right on the head in terms of the clear naked ambitions here because when you think about it, and we've had vacancies on this board, and the appointment is generally good for a year at the most, maybe less, and then it goes to the constituent voters.
Right.
So there is no reason to inject the politics or the internal strife from a K8 into a limited purpose regional. I can tell you that, you know, our firm does represent other limited purpose regionals in the state, and they are also dead set against this and don't see it and don't understand, you know, what the benefit is. You know, what problem are we solving with this? There isn't one.
It doesn't open, it doesn't open up to the municipality to say, well, I have, you know, if somebody's interested in being on a board, they have the chance to apply because you have candidates, and then you make the, we interview the candidates, correct? For the appointment, if there's more than one.
Under the current system, yes.
Right.
That's exactly how it works. Yes.
So I'm saying is you don't give the opportunity to an individual municipality to say, "Look at, these people are really interested in being on our board," because you're making the K8 make the choice.
So the perfect point...
Isn't that basically it?
Yeah, the perfect point, Ms. Lavin, is that, so Ms. Capiella was a, was chosen as replacement, and then the following year, she had to run.
Right.
On Election Day. Mrs. Higley is in the same boat right now. So she filled a term for a year, but she is now going on to the ballot if she wants to run again for the board and will be duly elected by the constituents of the community.
Well, I was in the same position. I mean, I went on in November, but at those times, the election was in April.
That's a, that's a dangerous position for school boards to take as it relates to limited purpose regional districts. And that's, that's a little bit frightening to me. And, you know, obviously, I don't, I'm not, I'm no longer a school board member in my own hometown.
I'm in a 4D.
But I'll certainly, I am certainly going to take the leadership of school boards to pass with that. I can guarantee everyone on that and ask them the rationale for it.
Mr. Parisi, is there a number, a policy number with that?
Is there, what do you mean, is there a policy number? You know what? If it's okay with Mr. President and the administration, I can email the resolutions to the board members.
Yeah, that would be great, Mr. Parisi.
Yeah. You know what we could do? Right now, we understand what they are. I've read them. Why don't we just hold the board? I say no to both resolutions. Can we do a poll?
Well, and I thank you. I was going to try to get consensus from the board, so if we just want to take it around with just a simple, I guess, yea, nay, I don't think we really need to go through a motion. I would like to hear from my fellow board members their feeling on this. And as I've been told, you know, I will take the consensus back to the, to the assembly. And if, at any point, I receive information which I decide that I'm going to vote a different way, I think it's highly unlikely in this particular resolution, but I would like to hear the consensus of the board.
Okay, so, Mark, do a roll call, please, and we'll each say yea or nay.
So how about all those opposed to this resolution? Let's start with that.
I'm opposed.
I'm opposed. And Mark, can you hear me?
Yes.
Mark, can you hear me?
I can hear you, Hashi.
Okay, tell them that not only am I opposed to this resolution, but down in Florida, they're having a real shortage of toilet paper, so maybe we can take the resolution and send it down there and use that for that.
Oh, stop.
Uh, Hashi.
For the record, I didn't say that, but I'm opposed to the resolution.
I'm opposed. I don't know what order you're going in.
Did we get everybody? Yeah.
You don't, you, Pete and Mike.
Oh, Pete and Mike, yes.
I'm mute.
Opposed.
Okay, so it's unanimous opposition is what I heard.
Unanimous opposition, exactly.
All right, thank you.
May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I saw Mrs. Higley. And second, Mrs. Lavin.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Meeting closed. Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, and we're going to be safe. Take care. Bye-bye.
How's your brother doing?
He's now had a quick three months. Well, he's...